This should be pretty uncontroversial.
Yes, should be. Haven't had anybody posing or questioning, just only calling for clarifications. Because it is a little complex.
I agree.
How long ago was it we heard this? We heard a zone change for this a couple of years ago that didn't happen, or I don't remember what went on with it, but seemed like it didn't go forward.
No, they applied to do a multi-family, changed it from R18 to a multi-family, the whole property, and got thumbs down, so.
Is this a newer owner, or is this someone that's owned the property for a long period of time?
Actually, it's under contract. He hasn't purchased it yet. It's subject to, so it is under contract. The contract is binding through the due diligence part. It's a six-month contract, so.
Is that under contract for the whole property, or the new part?
The whole, well, all the property that is 344 East is under contract. And he has contracts for the land swaps with the apartments next door. And the parts that are going to be sectioned off down at the south end.
I'm a little confused, because I thought the owner built a really nice apartment within that complex.
They did, on the 404 East. It's not new, it got remodeled recently. So it does look a lot better, yes, and they increased the density by three units. So, and you saw it on the agenda last month, or last week, actually, the 404 East property.
I almost bought, I had a bid on a house that backs up to that property, like four years ago.
On Hillview, or Hillside, I guess, or McMillan?
McMillan, McMillan. We really liked it, but didn't get it. We're happy here.
Yeah, but is that why you did your remodel?
I wasn't going to dive into it. I was insisting on remodelling. My husband was insisting on moving, so I gave him his chance.
Yeah, husbands.
It's okay, it all worked out in the end.
Sorry for being a couple minutes late, I apologize.
That's all right. I think Maren might be having some technical issues. Yeah, she's frozen. And a surprised face. Oh, now she's shaking her head.
Sorry, I don't know what my internet is doing. Hopefully, this works. So let's hurry and start, I guess, our staff review meeting for the Murray City Planning Commission. It is 6:04 on Thursday, March 4th, 2021. And present tonight, we have Travis Nay, Sue Wilson, Ned Hacker, Jake Pearson, Lisa Milkovich, Jeremy Lowry, and I am Maren Patterson. And from staff, it looks like we have Susan Nixon and Zach Smallwood. So on our agenda, there were no meetings or minutes from our last meeting, so we'll just.
They look good.
Yeah, they look great. And then conflicts of interest, does anyone have a conflict of interest with our agenda items tonight?
No.
And then approval of finding of facts, there were two, I think, Ruth Meyer's accessory dwelling unit and the Vine. Did you guys have a chance to look over those? Any comments, thoughts?
Look good.
Do you want me to do the motion on those, or does somebody else want to do it?
Whatever you think, Sue. It's always a great habit.
I've got it written, so.
All right, then, we will go to agenda item number four, Monterey Properties LLP, a general plan amendment and zone map amendment.
Right, I'll be interested in this one. So this involves two properties on 5600 South, 344 East, 404. The property 344 is a single family, it's been, R18 been vacant for a few years. The property 404 has a multi-family apartment complex on it, just recently got remodeled. And the request is to, in anticipation of having a future subdivision, so the applicant's applying for the majority of the property to be, go from R18 to R16, so 8,000 square feet to 6,000 square feet. And in so doing, if the zoning is approved, he would have to do a couple of little land swaps, the one out front. He is, would be an exchange of property to allow for a public road into the subdivision and better access. And he picks up an additional lot and giving the exact same amount of square footage, which is 6,489 square feet, they would be exchanging the same area of 6,489. And that is really just to accommodate the access off of 5600 South. And that's the most that 404, the apartment complex, can afford to. They can't get rid of any more than that, because then they don't meet the density for their apartment. So the R16 and R18 are both in the same category as low-density, single-family. The R16 also is in the RM residential multi-family designation, so if it's involved. So therefore, the majority of this is just zone map amendment. The only portions that are the general plan amendment, if you look in your packet on page three, that colored exhibit is very helpful. So just the parcels designated number three in yellow is the only part that would be, that needs the general plan amendment to go from R18 to RM15. The parcel, the remnant parcels in green on that same exhibit, number one would, assuming this all pans out, number one would go to the property adjacent to the north. And parcel, the property designated with the number two would be either deeded to the property to the south, or if the property owner to the south, they don't have that one under contract, the other ones are all under contract. This one, the property owners haven't decided if they want to do it. If they choose not to do it, then the applicant, when he comes through for the subdivision review, he will have to designate that as an open space and will not be a lot, because it does not meet the lot size, but would be shown as a parcel for a pocket park, something like that. There will have to be an HOA for the subdivision to maintain that. So one way or the other, he will get that resolved. But that will be dealt with when and if he comes back for the subdivision review. That's kind of it in a nutshell. We, like I said, we didn't get a lot of phone calls, only inquiries. Just calling for clarification, because it's a little complex. We did get one public comment email after the packets went out, and we'll read that into the record. That was in favor of the proposal, so. Does that make sense? Any questions?
So the southern sliver of yellow land, number three, is that supposed to be the detention basin? Is that, is that what I read?
A detention basin, well, actually, the larger number three will be the detention basin.
Okay, 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 perfect. That makes more sense. And then that stupid little sliver on number two heading east to west?
Yeah.
How can that be part of the pocket park? How wide is that? Is that like five feet wide at best?
Oh, the long sliver, it's actually six feet. And here's, and here's the deal with that one.
Oh, that changes everything.
Well, here's the funny thing is, that property, that actually is inside the vinyl fence with the adjacent property to the south. So their fence is actually encroaching into this property. So they're going to kind of have to take it, whether they want it or not, I think. Or they're going to have to move their fence six feet to the south.
But it's being given to them, deeding to them free of cost.
Yes.
So my question would be, so do they have to pay retroactive taxes on it?
I doubt that the developer is going to charge them that. He just was in a way to make the subdivision work. Now, they, so they will take that long east-to-west sliver, the part that they're not, haven't decided for sure on, is the bigger part of number two.
Okay.
The oddball-shaped one, that's about 3,000 square feet-ish. They haven't decided about that, so I guess that'll be between them. If they, if they don't want it, then now the developer will have to do a little pocket park, something.
And there, there is no way in shape or form that we would ever consider allowing that to connect through to Hillside, correct? I mean, I know that was a bunch of the debate, last time we heard this property was, the residents were adamant that they did not want that to be a through affair.
Good question. And right, that's still the opinion. And not only that, it's not possible, because that property is not wide enough to meet a public road width. Therefore, that's why he has to split it up and do something with it. And, and it's not, it's not wide enough. We require, you know, 42 to 49, and it's about 37 feet, so.
And if it was a public park, it would connect to the new neighborhood and Hillside?
Well, that would be ultimately up to the developer. HOA and/or, you know, I guess, what they decide to do, may just keep a fence up and keep it for themselves as part of that subdivision. I guess it's up to the developer how they are going to designate that and take care of that. So it could maybe just be open, the neighbors could use it, don't know. That will have to be resolved. Alan, the developer, is, he will be present, and he's bringing his land use attorney in case there's any legal questions on this.
Like it.
Yeah, you know, it's funny, this, this property, I cannot tell you how many people have looked at this property and tried to develop this, tried to make something work with no success for at least half a dozen times. So this was really creative, you know, with land swap and that. It's definitely creative. I got to hand it to you. He, he did his homework, so.
Yes, definitely. It's like straightforward but complicated.
Yes, yes, right.
Okay.
Any other questions? Did we, oh, did we lose Jeremy? Was he here?
He was earlier.
I am, I am here. I just, I, I, I'm seeing my, my phone situated, so I'm back, I'm back on the screen now.
Okay, well, if there's no other questions about this item.
I have a question for Sue. I mean, is, well, maybe we should just close this and just talk. What is that big building on the, whatever it is, 344 Park, or the?
The 404?
The parcel farthest to the east.
That is an apartment, it used to be, a long time ago, it used to be the old hospital, senior, and then it was converted to senior apartments. And then recently was re, a new owner, and they managed to squeeze in three more units. So it was 28 apartments originally, and it's now 31. So they did an interior remodel, basically. So it's just apartments.
They still are, right? I don't think it's done.
They're still in the process, yeah.
It's a nice building.
Yeah, it is.
There was, is that the one that was a nursing home, Susan, for years and years?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yep, same one.
All right, we have to make two motions, right?
Oh, yes, good, good point.
Just recommendations to the council.
That's what I was going to say, remember?
Yes, yeah, two, you could do two, the one motion for the zone map amendment, and then the one for the general plan. But there are three separate items on the one motion for the general planet, I'm sorry, for the zone change. Because there's three separate properties that have to be changed, or three separate areas, I should say.
So does that first motion, yep, include all three of those bullets?
It could. It's, that's preferable, but you can, I guess you could do every one of them as a separate motion if you wanted. But, you know, one kind of is dependent on the other, I think, so.
Right.
It's up to you how you want to do it.
Okay.
Travis can do that, he's a good, a good long.
Could it skew in numbers?
The R18.
Whenever there's hot air to blow, I'm good at it.
Oh, dear.
So, and yeah, it would just be a recommendation to city councils, as you know, so.
Hey, Susan, do we have any new information about the, what is it, Bonneview site? What's that, Commerce Drive in Vine-ish?
Oh, yeah. Zach, actually, he probably could respond more on that one. That's kind of his, he's been working more on that one. So yeah, go ahead, Zach.
Hi, Zach.
Hi. So long story, long story short, no, there's nothing really happening with it right now. They call like twice a week with a new question, so nothing, nothing concrete right now. I will say that we already have the building permit in for the Vine that you guys just approved last planning commission. They turned that around real fast. And that came, that's, that building permit came in, and I mean, those are some big plans there. You can't see for scale, but they are big plans. So it's, it's, yeah, so those are kind of the updates right now, but kind of, so.
How about the monopole over in the MCCD? Looks like the bottom of the three layers is slowly coming off. What's the status?
Yeah, that's, so the, the new cell tower is almost done, I believe. I drive by it quite a bit. I know that they're, they're working on, already starting to work on getting some providers up and running in there. So, but they won't take down that, the existing cell tower until everything is up on the new one. So we're still a little whiles away, so. But if you drive by the new city hall site, I saw that, saw this morning, they have a bunch of steel I-beams just ready to go, ready, that's all just laying there. It's ready to go, just need to pull the trigger, so.
We have a lovely elevator shaft.
Yes, that's all we've got. We're all going to, we're all going to fit in there, so.
Is that monopole something where you go, wait, 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 then all of a sudden everything's going to move? Or is it going to be?
I think so, yeah. Once that monopole's out of there, it's, things will start moving pretty rapidly, I think. On, on an unrelated note, I'll just chime in here. I believe the House bill for the internal ADUs, from what I can see, it looks like it passed the Senate today. So I'm going to have to probably bring some ADU changes to you guys. It doesn't go into effect until March, but probably expect that in the future, some updates to conform with state code. And then there were some other changes that I wanted to do anyway, so.
Did they get that clarification on how they were going to define owner occupied or owner present? Do you know, if they clarified that?
I think it's, they do have some definite definition for owner occupied, and that's, that's in the, that's in the new bill.
I think, Zach, you meant May, that the, it would, if it passed, it would go into effect in May. You said March.
Oh, well, neither of those things. It's October, so.
Okay.
It's none of those days, it's none of those months. It's October 1st, so I have a while to do it, so.
And is, is there any update on the Bullion Street project for Hamlet Homes?
Yes, as a matter of fact, there is, as of today. He, the developer will be coming back, same request to RM15. It will be scheduled for the April 1st meeting, but he has kind of redrawn his site plan or conceptual plan and reduced the number of units from 90 to 75, and incorporated some single-family homes upfront, more closer to Bullion, and then the townhomes at the back. Of course, that's not part of the rezon application, but I think since the neighborhood meeting, I don't know if any of you watched that, a week or so ago, what he.
I wanted to, but you guys said I couldn't.
You were obedient, Sue. Good for you, you were obedient. So anyway, because of the open house, the open house they had, and he showed plans, I think we may include his conceptual plan, which normally we don't, so we'll kind of see. But that's kind of the gist, gist of it. It's, yeah, it will be back April 1st.
It sounds really similar to what he did over on Judge House. Is that what that street is? It has like single-family houses first, and then like condos?
Very similar to that, only about three times that size.
Right, a little bigger.
Right, right, yeah. But it's a good, it's a good compromise, I guess, if you can use the word compromise.
Well, and if you go look at the development on 4800 South, where the fish food place was for years by the power department? That development is, is pretty nice, and that's 60, I think, or 61 units. And, you know, and they do build a nice product. I just worry about quantity in that dish area, because I'm sure the other residents nearby here do too, but it'll be interesting to see what they've, what they've come up with as a compromise and see what we can do with it.
Right, yes. It's a difficult property, for sure. The contamination makes it complex, and most people don't want to touch it because of that.
But he actually has experience in dealing with contaminated properties because of.
The fish property?
Yes. He's done four or five other ones in Murray that are contaminated. He, if anybody can do it, it is Hamlet, to be honest. So, yeah.
You know, I wish somebody had told me this like 30 years ago, before I let my kids go play over there and catch tadpoles for years and years.
The three eyes, the three eyes and six legs should have given it away.
I know, that's what my oldest said. He's like, thanks a lot, mom.
If anything goes wrong, it's not your bio.
Yeah. You know, what, what, what can you do?
What other updates do you know, Sue?
Well, let's see. I'm working on the old, well, the mortuary, I'm trying to figure out where we go with that on the mixed use. Let's see, so that's kind of put a damper on a lot of potential projects. Let's see, what else?
The Garvin property?
See how much trouble we can get in. There's nobody to tell us not to say things. We'll just tell you everything.
There you go.
Yeah, right, give you the insight. What were you going to say, Sue?
The Garvin property over by Riverview Junior High? Has that, anything gone on that?
Um, we're, they're still, for the, you mean, as far as the access, the 10 lots that the.
Yeah.
Housing Authority was, yeah. So like, yes, yes, that one. From what we understand, they were really close on getting an appraisal for that property that would be potentially eminent domain, that the council would do eminent domain on, but, and so supposedly they're really close on maybe coming to an agreement, I guess, so we might see that.
About a couple hundred bucks. It's like two feet wide. Isn't it just a couple hundred bucks? Like, they could play poker, and whoever wins, wins, and then we just go from there.
We wish it was that simple.
Did, did you tell us that the school district owns the bonnet ball field right there? Does that property belong to the school district?
Yes, yes, I think so.
It sure does. I can tell you, it was the bane of my wife's existence, because she ran the softball league for years, and the district just was not good to work with at all. The district resisted anything and everything on that property. It was just unfun to deal with the district.
Well, I had heard that they aren't going to do girls' softball there anymore. So I just, I thought, oh, I hope that doesn't get muddy the water for the triplane property. But if the school district owns it, they'll probably just add it back into the school.
Well, the high school still plays their home games there. So it's just, it's just a bonnet ball that's maybe not there anymore, or just a season off, or who knows? It, it's been a struggling league for years, you know, it's, when I first started, you had six teams in each age group up through the 18-year-olds, and by the time we were done, you hoped to get two teams in the older division, and a lot of times, it was a bunch of 14-year-olds that were playing in tournaments against 18-year-old girls, and, you know, it's tough to do, but we always were able to get something together, but.
Hey, does anyone else, any other questions, or maybe we'll close this meeting until our actual planning commission meeting? All right, I'll take a break and be back at 6:30. All right, it is now 6:30, so I will call to order the Murray City Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, March 4th, 2021. Present this evening are Commissioners Jeremy Lowry, Jake Pearson, Sue Wilson, Lisa Milkovich, Travis Nay, Ned Hacker, and I am the Chair, Maren Patterson. From staff joining us, we have Susan Nixon and Zachary Smallwood, and I think Brent Farder, but I haven't checked. As the Chair of the Murray City Planning Commission, I, Maren Patterson, have determined that due to infectious disease, COVID-19, novel coronavirus, holding an in-person meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those in attendance. Under these circumstances, Utah Code 54, no, 52-4-2074 allows for electronic meetings to be held without an anchor location so long as the public had an opportunity to view the meeting and submit public comments. We are holding tonight's planning commission meeting via video conference, and the meeting is being livestreamed at www.murraycitylive.com. If you have a public comment to submit to the planning commission, please do so via email at planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. And so we will start with our agenda this evening. We have a pretty light agenda. Item number one is approval of minutes. We did not have minutes in this packet for our last meeting, so we will move to agenda item number two, which is conflict of interest. Did any of the commissioners have a conflict of interest with the items this evening?
No.
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 No, and I do not either, so it looks like we can move forward. Item number three is approval of finding of facts. Have, have you had an opportunity to review the findings of facts of conclusions for Ruth Meyer's and the Vine Think Development?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve those findings of fact.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve findings of fact for Ruth Meyer's accessory dwelling, for initial use permit for Ruth Meyer's accessory dwelling unit on the property addressed 352 East Hillside Drive, and also a motion to approve the findings of fact for the design review approval to allow the construction of a new mixed-use building within the MCCD zone at the property addressed 184 East Vine Street for Joe Johnson and Think Development.
Great, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lowry, all in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? All right, we will move on to agenda item number four, a general plan amendment and zone map amendment for Monterey Properties. And there's multiple properties listed, so we will have a presentation by Susan Nixon.
Thank you. Hopefully, I can share my screen here. Are we there? Are you? Okay, all right. Okay, so this request, as Ms. Patterson just said, is for Monterey Properties for a general plan amendment and zone map amendment for key properties at 344 East and 404 East on 5600 South. The aerial, the both properties on. Um, the aerial, the both properties on the south side of 5600, the property on the left is 344, property on the right is 404 East. The property on the left of 344 is a vacant property, it's been vacant for a few years. And then the property on the right is a currently an apartment development building. The property on the left is currently zoned R18, residential, single-family, and the other property proposal is currently zoned RM15 for multifamily. Both properties currently are consistent with the future land use for our general plan for low-density residential and medium-density residential as shown on the future land use map. The low-density residential category in our future land or general plan has several different zonings that are applicable, as you can see on the left-hand side. The R16 falls into both the low and medium-density single-family, as you can see also on the medium-density. The R16 is shown on both. The RM15 is multi-fam, uh, medium-density residential. The properties are here are shown, um, the two top property, two top photos are the property that's vacant, the single-family vacant property at 344 East and the two bottom photos are the apartment complex at 404. And then these are just some, uh, photos of the interior of the property, the main, uh, property at 344, which is vacant. And then also, this photo is the one on the upper left is the rear of the property uh, showing the, um, vinyl fence adjacent to the property owner to the south. And the bottom-left corner photo is a view from Hillside, excuse me, Hillside Drive, uh, that shows a gate accessing this property. And the bottom-right is also the view from the Hillside, uh, excuse me, the property at 344 East looking at Hillside Drive. And then just the interior of the 344 East on the upper right. So this is the meat and bones of this whole application, this lovely colored map, uh, provided by the applicant. So let me kind of explain this to you. It's a little bit difficult, uh, complicated, but actually pretty easy. The bulk of the property, um, on the left exhibit overall, the, all of the colored property except for number four, the pink, is the property in question at 344 East. The pink parcel is portion of the property at 404 East. So there will be a land swap between the two property owners. The properties that would be, the parcels, the, the portion of property that would be swapped is noted as the yellow, number three, and the pink, number four. Number four would be deeded to number, to the adjacent property, number three, would go to the east. This swap is ordered to, in order to accommodate a future subdivision, if the zoning is approved. Uh, and it would allow, um, for better access up at 5600 South and to allow for a public road, which is required for, uh, new subdivisions. Typically, we don't show a concept plan in zone changes, but at this point, it was fairly necessary in order to explain why there's so much swapping and the different changes for the zone request. So the bulk of the property is shown in, uh, orange, number five. That will change from the current R18 to R16, so from 8,000 square foot minimum lot size to 6,000. The portion shown at the south end in green designated as number one and two will remain R18. So that is not part of tonight's application. The pink portion in the upper, on the north side is currently RM15 and that is part of the apartment property at 404 East. That needs to change from the current zoning of RM15 to R16. The yellow portions shown, number three in yellow, uh, will go from R18 to RM15 and will be deeded to the apartment property. The two properties that will be swapped, number four and number three, are the exact same square footage of 6,489 square feet. And that needs to, that, um, area needs to be maintained because the apartment to the east needs to maintain at least 2.603 acres, which is where they are right on the money in order to, to meet the density for the 31 units that are in the apartment complex. So it's exactly swap, say swap 6,489 square feet for 6,489 square feet. The, uh, property that's also did, uh, shown in green, number one would be, and the applicant can expound on this a little more, but this is what the proposal is at this time. The number one and number two will remain R18. Number one would be deeded to the property owner to the north, the Van Heist's. And then the number two would either be deeded to the property owner to the south or will remain as a pocket park for the subdivision. One or the other, but that will need to be resolved when it comes back for the subdivision review, if the zoning is changed. So, um, the only portion of this whole application that needs the general plan amendment pertains to the part, the portion that is highlighted in yellow, number three, that needs the zone change and also the general plan amendment from low-density, single-family residential to medium-density residential. So based on review of the current zoning, the existing and surrounding properties and the unique configuration of this property, um, staff is recommending approval and the planning commission serves as an advisory board to the city council. So we are proposing the recommendation of approval for the zone map amendments and the general plan amendment as shown on screen on number one and number two. If the planning commission is in agreement with this, there would need to be two motions made, number one and number two, for the um, respective zone changes, general plan amendments. The applicant and his land use attorney, I believe, are present, so if you have any land use, legal questions, I'm sure they can answer them. Is there any questions that you have?
Susan, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Pause if you thought this through, but just for the sake of discussion, um, can you show us the, the color-coded map again?
Yes.
So that middle, bigger, number three that's in yellow, it's right up against the would-be potential, um, right-of-way and I don't know, are there any ordinances around the setbacks or the property lines against a right-of-way? Is that going to work just fine?
Uh, yes, actually, um, there, there will need to be an easement across that property and, and Mr. Prince can explain that a little more when he's, when it's his turn, but, um, from what I understand, there will need to be an access easement across that, um, from the subdivision to that, so that for drainage, I believe it's going to be a detention, uh, area that needs to be maintained. So it won't be, um, you probably won't even notice that. A good question. So, um, he'd have to come back for an infill subdivision request. And at that point also, the sidewalks, landscaping and public, um, road improvements would be addressed and that would be, have to be addressed at that time. So good question. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes, that's great. I, I have one other question. I should have asked this earlier, I apologize. Um, currently 404 and 344, both the, they're all one parcel now, but the the apartment and would-be subdivision are owned by the same person?
No, the apartment, they're two separate parcels. The 404, um, is, has the apartment complex on it that's existing. The 344 is vacant and a separate owner. Mr. Prince has it under contract to purchase, subject to getting approval.
Okay. Though, I actually, correct, I was wrong. They're separate parcels, will they continue, continue to be separate owners?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Ask a question?
Yes.
The, the pink section, number four, on the general plan, is that going to stay um, RM15?
On, on the general plan, yeah, it will remain as residential uh, medium-density.
Oh, it's already medium-density, okay.
Yes, so it, R16 falls under both, uh, low-density residential and medium-density residential. So that doesn't require a general plan amendment. So that will remain the same for the general plan, yes. The only thing changing in the general plan is what is shown in, uh, yellow, number three. It's a little confusing because R16 falls under both low and medium-density residential.
So, so the property sitting in, in pink right now is already, um, I can't think what is, is on the general plan. It's already medium-density?
Yes. Yes.
But the rest of that property to the east is not?
Uh, yes, it is. Let me go back to, um, so if.
Okay.
See this? Yeah, okay.
I got it.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was, that's confusing.
Can I ask one more question, Maren, Madam Chair? Um, Susan, kind of follow up with the question to my last question, and I know it's exposing my ignorance, but at least I know we're trying to think it through. Um, why I was interested in whether the two parcels have the same, well, yeah, the two different parcels, I realize there's a lot going on there, but you know, I mean, the apartment versus the new, potential new subdivision. Why I was asking if they had same owners or different owners is because in the future, 10 years from now, could that affect the easement? How would that affect the easement for that little piece of property along the side of the road there? Could that be a legal issue in the future or a problem for the HOA to maintain or should I not, it won't be a problem at all? They're solving it now.
Are you, are you talking about the yellow, um, number three?
Yes, that number three area, when it's part of the apartments and not part of the subdivision, if they have an HOA, but yet there's an easement there with some kind of drainage or something that's directly affected and related to the road? Could that be an issue in the future or am I silly?
Uh, that, so if there's a recorded easement, the easement goes on the, on the property, it's recorded on the property with access, um, to it. So maybe that would be a question for Alan and the attorney, the legal part of it, but that would have to be, yes, resolved so that, that would be binding for the future, whether the owners of the properties change or not, because that would have to, that would be a requirement, yes.
Susan, can I chime in real quick?
Yes.
Uh, I, I'm, I, I apologize, Lisa, if I'm reading kind of outside of what you're thinking, but I think the intent is that number three will eventually get, um, combined into the apartment.
Yes.
Um, parcel. I'm not sure if that helps.
Yes.
Explain it.
Yes, that, you're correct. Thank you.
That was, that was a little bit of my concern that it has the potential in the future that be two separate owners. And if that, again, I don't really know. I'm, I know, I'm not as informed to really have this discussion that I should be, but I, I was parcel number three will be part of the apartments and I think it also affects the roadway there. There'll be easements, agreements, how that roadway can be built and drainage and things like that. And I was wondering if that would be a problem in the future, but I think Susan answered it. Thank you.
I think that's a good question for the applicant. I have that exact same question.
Okay.
Because it has a direct effect, impact on the, um, the new 30, um, the 344 property, since it'll be the drainage basin for that property.
And I think Alan, Mr. Prince can, can expound on that, but, but to answer Lisa's question, just so it's clear, um, yes, the yellow part, the yellow prop, parcels portion designated with yellow number three would have to be consolidated with the big property of 404, the apartment property. So they will have to consolidate those properties. So they are one and under one ownership for the 404. If that makes sense. Okay, any other questions?
Okay, well, um, then let's have the applicant, um, if they're here tonight, maybe, um, raise their hand on the uh, webinar and then, um, we'll unmute you and you can state your name and address, uh, for the record.
Okay, great. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, my name is Paxton Geiman. I'm the applicant's attorney. Uh, he's here with me along with his wife in my office. I take it you can't see us on your screens, is that right?
No, we can't.
Okay, so you're telling me I put on my suit and tie for no reason? Anyway. Hey, we, we really appreciate your attention to this application tonight. Uh, I'll probably trade off with, uh, Mr. Prince on, on responding to some of the questions, but he asked me to start off to respond to Commissioner Milkovich's question about, parcel number three shown in yellow. I'm sorry if I butchered your, your name, by the way, Commissioner. But if, if we can start by talking about that, so a little bit of background to put this in context for you. Because we need to have this as a public road, not a private road, and in order to meet the lot dimension requirements for the R16 zone, uh, we needed to work out a land swap agreement with the owners of the apartment project. So again, the apartment project is to the east. Currently, that area shown as number three in yellow is owned by the apartment property owners.
Both, both of the threes.
Right, both of the threes, I should say. So we wanted to do a land swap where the exact square footage of land would be traded to them and then we would get the same amount back in parcel number four that's highlighted in purple. So by doing this land exchange agreement, which by the way, we've already negotiated and signed with the apartment property owners, so we've already worked this out. Um, ownership of the yellow highlighted area will go to the apartment owners. But then number three there, the larger one, we're going to reserve an easement over that land. So the apartment owners will, will own it and we will reserve a, a storm drain easement so that we can put in our storm detention basin there. It's really a great solution and you won't notice any difference from the surface once we're done with the work, because it will just be a nice grass landscaped area like open space, but it will allow us to meet the lot dimensions for the zone request we're, we're, we're after. Um, as you know, there's no such thing as an easy infill project. Almost every infill project like this one, you're dealing with sort of odd remnant parcels of land that many developers have overlooked or passed on because of the challenges presented. Uh, to Mr. Prince's credit, he dug in deep on this one and figured out solutions to the problems that have not been solved before. This land swap agreement was part of that. This is one of the elements he's put in place because it allows for a really nice little cul-de-sac infill subdivision with seven new homes. So we're really excited about this. A, a lot of work, of work has gone into it already. And, um, I think that Susan Nixon did an excellent job candidly of sort of presenting how this has come together and what it entails. I really don't have anything to add to what she said, except that we're happy to do this infill project in Murray and be able to provide seven new homes. And when it comes to new home construction in this market, it's very hard to find anything affordable, but on this size of lot, we're, we're happy to come in with what we think will be more affordable new home construction for the city of Murray. And that's really what infill projects are all about, is finding a way to make use of land that's really just been ignored. So I don't know if you have any other questions. I'm happy to answer them. Mr. Prince is here with me if you have questions for him.
I want to clarify Ms. Milkovich's, uh, question. So the, the easement of the large property, number three, to the apartment complex house is going to forever prevent the apartment from developing on that property?
That, that is absolutely correct. That's a great point, Commissioner Hacker. It can't be developed because it will be underground as our storm detention system. Um, so it'll never be developed on, because that's part of what our store, project needs for storm landscape detention. Yeah, Mr. Prince is reminding me, it will forever remain as landscape open space.
Are there any other questions for the applicant?
I have one quick question. I know it's just a curiosity question. It does not affect the outcome of this, uh, you know, this item, applicant's, um, item, but, um, fencing, is fencing allowed post-easement or is it will never be fenced as well?
I can, I can come in.
Yeah, I'll let Mr. Prince answer that for you. He's going to take my seat, so just one moment.
Well, good evening, uh, Commissioners, and thank you for the privilege of being here with you. I might just mention to you, this is the ninth subdivision. I might just mention to you, this is the ninth subdivision I've done in your city. And I'm quite startled. I get as nervous tonight as I did the very first one I ever did. So if I stumble, it's nerves and nothing more. To answer your question directly, when we first came to the planning department and met with both Susan and, Susan and I go way back, and when we came in to meet with she and Trey, our idea was to link a private 25 foot road from 5600 through to Hillside. And they quickly point out, I, of the eight previous subdivisions I've done in the city, six of them, I went back and counted, six of them were 25 foot private roads. And it was quickly pointed out to us, that's no longer an option. And so we, thank you to the staff, because they pointed out to us the merit of what we could do if we changed the zone to R16 from R18, that it would open up the opportunity to make this all work. So the swap that we've done with our neighbors, if you go, if you were to drive tonight after this meeting, there along 5600, you'd see that that corner where we show number, the item number four in pink, that a lot there with the lovely home on it is vastly superior to what's there now. It's really rough. And opening this up and making a conforming public road let us do all the things we needed to do. We wanted to put our lots lined up against the apartment complex, but there wasn't enough room to do it because the apartment building was encroaching over into this space. It's actually fairly close. So by making this yellow swap, it gave some elbow room to that apartment building and, and the landscaping will really benefit them as well as us getting a seventh lot. When we made the swap, the land swap, we reserved the right to have a drainage easement, because that was one of the requirements we needed to cover in our development criteria. So the, that, that storm drain will, the storm drain system will be conforming with all the standards that your engineering department will require. We've already lined it up and made it work. We have all the calculations for it. And, and it's a great benefit to the apartment. The apartment building, I might just mention to you, has 10 owners. Each one of them had to agree and sign off. So you can appreciate the challenge it has been to get everyone in this neighborhood to agree to all of this. And it makes a lot of sense or they wouldn't have agreed. Fencing around, we'll all put a, assuming that we move forward and are approved, we would put a masonry wall along the shoulders of the lots that, that shoulder onto 5600. We'd put a solid vinyl fence along the backside of lot four or of our lot seven, that number four that you see in pink. When you get to number three, we would do a two rail little country fence bordering along the road. The idea being that you want to not be blocked off from the beauty of that landscape. So it will be a permanent fence, but it will be visually, you know, able to appreciate the, you know, the trees and grass and so on. If that helps.
Thank you for your answer. That, and I like it. It sounds great.
Any other questions for the applicant?
May I comment if, just you haven't asked this question, but may I just clarify as to the green spots that you can see below? If you look to the right hand side to the overall exhibit, you can see that the piece of ground and its deed was an odd shaped piece as it comes out to confront Hillside Drive. Now, interestingly enough, what we've listed here as number one is already fenced in by the neighbor, even though we have the deed. So long ago, they claim some 30 years ago to have bought that little triangle, but they never received a deed for it. So we've become good friends with them. We will be deeding at no cost to them that piece and cleaning up that matter. And I assume, Susan, that we'll be doing a lot consolidation to bring those two parcels together to be one parcel before we're through.
Yes, that would be part of the condition of approval. Yeah.
To the, what we list as number two, and you can see the arrow, that family's name is Aloy and they're lovely people. And Susan, you don't know this, but he called me today. We had a terrific conversation. We, we may yet deed that entire piece to him at no cost. And then he would landscape it as part of his yard. If he elects not to do that, which is his right, of course, we would make a little tiny pocket park. We have a very sweet friend that would like to dedicate that little pocket park to. And it would just be landscaped with trees and shrubs and taken care of by the HOA. If you can see the long little thin piece in green that leads along the proper subdivision, the deed that we are receiving overlaps his yard by some five feet. He bought his home in 1999, in November of 1999. So it's been more than 20 years and by statute, that becomes his ground. So I've instructed from day one that we would only run to the fence line and we will give him a quick claim deed, one way or the other, for that long, thin piece. So again, it cleans up the neighborhood and solves these longstanding problems.
Great. Thank you for that information. Okay, I will now open this, the meeting for a public comment regarding this item. If you would like to make a comment on this agenda item, you can do so by emailing theplanningcommission@murray.utah.gov. Or if you are participating in the meeting through the Zoom webinar, which I'm not sure, do we have any participants, Zach?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm doing, I'm helping Jeremy with something, but could you just repeat what you just said?
Do we have anyone registered for, to speak, make a live comment?
I haven't seen anybody yet. I think everybody that's on is part of the project. If you do want to make a live comment, I would say, do the raise your hand button?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you would like to make a live comment. And you can raise your hand. And if you are making a live comment, we will ask that you limit your comment to three minutes. If you have submitted an email comment previous to the meeting, it will now be read into the meeting. And we ask you do not make any additional live comments. And so let's do our email comment.
Let's actually, I think Jeremy needs to chime in just a second.
Yeah, really, really quickly. I guess, I, I just wanted to disclose that, that where I work, our bank has done some work with Mr. Geiman's firm. They're, they're a client. And so I want to disclose that I do know Mr. Geiman. It has no influence on my decision whatsoever, but I just wanted to disclose that.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Murray. Perfect. Okay, we will go to the public comment.
Perfect. I will read that now. So this is from a Patricia Van Heist, I believe. Is how you say her last name. Planning Commission, my name is Patricia Van Heist and I am indicating my support of the zone change to the property at 5600 South, 404 East and 5600 South and 355 East as listed on the Zone Map Amendments. Zone change is to R-six. I am in favor of the single housing developments that is anticipated for the property. Murray is in need of single housing dwellings rather than having more apartments or multi housing units. With the proposed seven homes, I feel that 5600 South can easily handle the potential increased traffic. Thank you, Patricia Van Heist. And that was sent on Tuesday, March 2nd, about 11:50 AM.
Great. Thank you. Have you received any other comments?
Ms. Patterson, I neglected to mention, we did send out 167 notices to surrounding neighbors. And there was no opposition. All the phone calls we did receive were just more or less for clarification on the request. And actually, everybody supported the proposal, so.
Great. Thank you for that information.
Yeah, and we have not received any additional emails as of yet.
Okay. And no raised hands? No one wants to make a?
No raised hands.
Okay. Then I will close the public comment portion of this meeting and open it for any discussion amongst our commissioners or a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. Before I make the motion, I just want to take a minute to really compliment the applicants here. This is a very complicated land swap that they have done here, and I think they have been incredibly generous to the neighbors to ensure that, you know, the property that whether it was indeed or not remained with the people that have claimed the property. And we've seen a fair amount of that surrounding this apartment complex in general. But I just really like to compliment you guys on, on coming forward and, and working with the neighbors and really trying to make your project fit within the context of the surrounding community and not trying to force something on the community that they, that they resisted in the past. So thank you for doing that. With that, I will make a motion that we forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the following requested zone map amendments, including amendment to the zoning map designation for the property located at 344 East, 5600 South from R18, single family residential to R16, single family residential. Amendment to the zoning map for RM, or from RM15, multifamily residential to R16, single family residential for the portion of the property of 404 East, 5600 South, as described in the staff report. And an amendment to the zoning map designation from R18, single family residential to RM15, multifamily residential for the portion of the property at 344 East, 5600 South, again, as described in the staff report.
Great. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So I have a motion by Commissioner Nay and a second by Commissioner Milkovich to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the following requests to the zone map amendments as read in the motion. And is there any discussion on that motion? If not, I'll take, I'll call for a vote.
Okay. So Commissioner Nay.
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson.
Yes. So that was for the zone map amendment. So now we will do the general plan future land use map. Is there any discussion about the changes for the general plan future land use map? If not, then I'll call a motion for that item.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the requested amendments to the general plan future land use map, redesignating the portion of the property located at 344 East, 5600 South, as described in the staff report from low density residential to medium density residential.
Great. Thank you. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. So I have a motion by Commissioner Hacker and a second by Commissioner Wilson to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the requested amendment to the general plan future land use map, redesignation, redesigning the portion of property located at 344 East, 5600 South, as described in the staff report from low density residential to medium density residential. There any discussion about that motion? All right, then we'll call for a vote.
Okay, Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. So we will look forward to hearing what the city council, they will be receiving these recommendations and considering this, these changes as well. So good luck with the next step of your project. Okay, we'll move on. Is there any other business items for us to address this evening?
I don't think so. I think we kind of covered everything. We, we only have a single item on the next agenda as well. An ADU. So that should be a quick meeting. So that's, that's about it right now.
Like the short agendas. Okay, great. And then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Remember to state the time when you make your motion.
Madam Chair, can I move to adjourn at 7:10 PM?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.
You.
Bye.
Have a great weekend.
To you.